Good evening, everyone. At this time I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, July 25th, 2016, to order. All members are present and the meeting will officially start at 7:04. At this time I'd kindly ask if we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any transmission of Treasury warrants to handle and we do not have any approval of minutes. As most of you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct the interviews with the applicants that are interested in the Board of Appeals' position. As many know here on this board and out in the public that Charles Boyle, after several years on the board, has made a decision to not continue in that capacity. As you all may remember, in our last Board of Selectmen meeting, we spent time personally recognizing and thanking Mr. Boyle for his years of service to the town. Once again, I'd like to reiterate our gratitude to Mr. Boyle and tonight, we are charged with the task of speaking to several candidates this evening who have expressed interest in this position. Some of the candidates have expressed interest in this position as well as other town positions. And after having a board discussion collectively here, I had stated out to all of you just my own personal opinions as a board member that we had so many applicants and in my recollection, as short a tenure as it may be, I don't recall us having this many interested candidates for the Board of Appeals and we haven't been in the position to necessarily appoint a new member. And I felt it was beneficial to put it out to discussion to all of you, to have what would be considered an informal meet and greet, certainly was not mandatory for anybody that expressed interest or applied for this volunteer position. Certainly want to convey to the public that we're certainly grateful for people's interest in this position. We certainly want to promote volunteerism. We are volunteers ourself here on this board, although we are elected. And in the spirit of that cooperation, I put it out to a discussion to all of you. It's my understanding and recollection that we all as a board decided unanimously that it made sense to have a public setting, a transparent, open forum, to allow these candidates to come in and spend a little time with us. So, we are on a very tight schedule, but we certainly want to give everybody an opportunity. Our first meeting tonight is with Mr. Nelson, Mr. Mark Nelson, from 7:00 to 7:15, which will certainly allot for additional time. And we'll allow Mr. Nelson to come to the table, spend five minutes talking to us, and then I will open it up to all board members. If you have any questions, we can navigate through it and then we'll continue on to the next person on the list till we get through everybody. And then I'll come back and talk to you about procedurally how we'll navigate through the actual process of deliberating and making a decision this evening. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. At this time, Mr. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. I hope everybody had a great day.
Thank you.
Still have it.
So, Mr. Nelson, basically five minutes is yours for the floor and then, you know, we're going to keep close on time, so please, you know, forgive us if we try and wrap you up at any point. And then we're going to ask some questions and then we're going to move on to our additional candidates.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Nelson, Four Poplar Street. I've lived in town since 1955 and first became involved in construction in 1968. I had a roofing business in the early 70s and a cable TV business in the mid-'70s and early '80s. I sold the cable TV business and in 1984, I started building new homes and developing private ways around town. I've been self-employed my entire life. I received certificates for having completed four land development law classes taught by Attorney Carol Rolfe in the late '80s. Attorney Rolfe worked on the zoning act in the mid-'70s and understood the intent behind each law. Very familiar with Massachusetts laws, Chapter 40A, 40B, and 41 that relate to land use as well as zoning bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, and the rules and regulations of the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board subdivision control. I prepared numerous applications and presented many cases and hearings and drafted and filed multiple appeals with the Land Court Superior Court and filed many briefs in the Appeals Court and the Land Court. In Land Court case miscellaneous 2002-67499, the Planning Board filed an appeal in the Land Court against the Board of Appeals and myself. Board of Appeals properly issued a variance for an official map and the Planning Board sued in October 2000. The case was finally dismissed by the Chief Justice Karen Shire in June 2013 when I filed a request to C.Jam, the Chief Justice for Administration and Management of the Trial Court, to consolidate the Land Court with the Superior Court case. And she stated in her order, "The defendant members of the zoning Board of Appeals were not represented by counsel." It appears the counsel, the zoning Board members, were not actively involved in the case, but were leaving the defense of the action to Mr. Nelson, who was representing himself. I've also served on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I've hired hundreds of town residents in both construction and the cable TV business since 1972. And I filed numerous, six appellate tax board cases where I did my first litigation. I know you're running tight, so I'll keep it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I would open it up to any board members that may have a question that you'd like to ask. Feel free by signal with a hand raised, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a question for you, Mark. If you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home and was looking for a variance from 20 feet to 15 feet in order to build in addition so that someone's kid could stay living with them or their parents, and the whole neighborhood supported the variance, noting that it could be a hardship or not and some discretion is needed, therefore, you may help keep a Wilmington resident living in Wilmington or they may have to move, how would you vote?
I'm sure it'd be a case-by-case situation and you'd have to look at all the facts and the plans and, you know, go through the testimony and all that, but more than likely, I'd probably lean towards being in favor or something like that. You know, I know there's a lot of hardship out there and with the economy the way it is and most families, both parents are working two jobs and times have changed.
All right. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay. Anything further?
May I?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Briefly, Mr. Nelson, thank you. I'll say first, thanks for your willingness to volunteer and participate in the civics process. And if it's a legal question that you're not allowed to answer because it's hung up in courts or stuff, then I accept that. But are you able to indicate to me or share with us if you have currently any pending lawsuits against the town?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
In fact, we just settled three appellate tax board cases. We had, I was trying to, been trying to get an occupancy permit for Four Poplar Street for 12 years now. Took us 15 years and three lawsuits just to get the building permit. And some of those cases were involved in the Judge Kilborn's decision that was issued in February 2000. We had eight cases. We had a two-day trial, over 100 exhibits, 10 people testified. And at that point in time, Town Council Alan Altman was telling the judge, "The only way we could get to our property because of the official map was by helicopter." That essentially all the paper streets that were on these old ancient subdivisions, with the adoption of the official map, that they were supposedly vanished, that you had no right to travel over them. And the judge laughed at them. With the, trying to get the occupancy permit, we went to the State Building Code Board of Appeals, they supported the building inspector, took that to Superior Court. The Superior Court judge's decision was that all we needed were as-built plans for the structures certified by a professional engineer, that the plans complied with the sixth edition of the State Building Code 780-CMR. And then we went to the Appeals Court and they reaffirmed the Superior Court that that's all we were needing. We've supplied those plans a long time ago, but the goal line keeps moving. So, we still don't have an occupancy permit. The property's assessed at over $1 million. We're paying $14,000 a year in property taxes, mortgage payments, insurance, oil, you name it. So, we're doing it. We've exhausted all our remedies.
Anything over here? Yes.
Why are you interested in this position?
I've lived in town since 55, you know. I know a lot about Board of Appeals and the rules and regulations and all that. And as I say, I've served on the Master Plan Advisory Committee before. I offered to serve on the Board of Assessors and, you know, over the years, I've run for selectmen a few times. So, there's some things that I'd like to, you know, participate in and give back to the community.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, you mentioned that you'd been in business for yourself since 1968, is that correct?
1968, I was 13 years old. I used to carry bricks for Ralph Newhouse. He lived across the street. And then as it went on, I was like his right-hand man and cleared all his lots and was his handyman until I started a roofing business.
And are you still currently in business for yourself, building or?
When I can get a permit.
Sure. And so, my question for you is, would you foresee any conflicts? Not that you could predict the future, but how would you handle perhaps a conflict of interest? You might have to recuse yourself.
Well, you'd step down, you know.
Anything further? Yes.
Yeah, real quick, Madam Chair. You had another job. You were dating a girl across the street and you used to help babysit the Novak girl. You used to babysit me. I thought I'd tell folks that right now. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for remembering that.
Okay. No, I won't forget.
Hey, must've been a good babysitter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Our next appointment is with Richard Hopper. Hi, how are you? So, once again, just, I know you had come in while we had had the introduction, which is fine because your appointment isn't till now, so just to let people know, you're not late by any means. But just, we're going to have you do a five-minute. If you want, you can take up to five and then we have up to 10 to ask questions. So, if you want to open the floor with your own comments and then we'll engage with you as appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Rich Hopper. I'm pretty much born and raised in Wilmington here. I heard about this position through my sister, Gwen Lawson, and it's just something that's interested me.
Okay.
I've been in, I've done construction pretty much my whole life and I've been doing real estate professionally for six years now. And I, you know, I know, you know, with construction and real estate, there's just a lot of, and just the community in general, there's a lot of people that are involved in every decision that's made. So, when I heard about this position, I thought it would be a great opportunity to learn and hopefully, you know, it's volunteer work, so I mean, you know, volunteer for my, you know, be, just work with my community a little bit and do something for my community that I've lived in for 30 years now. I don't know a lot, I don't know a lot about the position, but that's why I want to learn. I want to learn more about, you know, the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals and just how the whole process works. But yeah, I don't, I don't really know too much about the position and hopefully, that's not a game changer, doesn't kill my chances.
Well, I would just jump in there and say that it doesn't kill your chances. I think, you know, I'd tell you, there was no manual on how to be a selectman when I got into being a selectman or being a school committee member. So, rest assured that, you know, this is, this is a volunteer position.
Yeah.
I think it gives you a lot of credit to even step forward and put your name in for something, so you should be, you know, very pleased with that in and of itself. So, I don't want to take up your time, but did you have any additional comments that you wanted to make?
Not really. I mean, you know, I, you know, I'm just here really to learn. It seems like I would learn a lot working with, you know, other folks from the community. I think I'd learn a lot about, you know, just, just the inner workings of, you know, maybe a little government, which would be good to know. And just having some volunteer work on my rec, on my, you know, part of my credentials and on my resume, I think would really look good too for any future jobs that I do.
Okay. Are you all set for questions at this time?
Yeah, definitely.
So, let me, I'll jump in and so, you know, previous applicants that came in, there were questions that were asked, so kind of in that same track, is that in the Board of Appeals' position, there may be a situation where you have the delicate balance of understanding zoning bylaws and what, you know, general laws state about structures and what's able to be built in the town of Wilmington.
Yeah.
And at the same time, there are residents that are taxpaying residents that own homes that want to have the ability to potentially expand the footprint of their home, whether it's a hardship or they want to, you know, add structures on for their family members or whatever the case may be, it's a case-by-case basis. And in some situations, you're in a juxtaposition where you have to hold a fine line to support zoning and regulatory means to uphold, you know, past practice and what is considered acceptable from the building department's perspective. But at the same time, an applicant might be a fellow community member that, you know, you really don't want to say no. So, you're in that situation where you have to take a hard line. You understand the facts and figures, but at the same time, you know, you really want to say yes. So, give me an example, and it doesn't have to be necessarily the Board of Appeals' experience because we know this is new for you, how you would, tell me an experience about in your life where you've had to take a hard line on something, whether it's a business example or otherwise, that you've had to take, had to say no. Because it's difficult. You're going to be dealing with your neighbors and friends in town that may have an application.
Yeah, I mean, the law's the law. I mean, you know, people make, you know, people elect people to make those laws and, you know, it takes a while to change them, but I mean, usually they're, they're in place for a good reason, to protect the greater good of the community. So, I mean, I say no all the time to, you know, people I'm talking to on the phone or, you know, just general business. You just have to know how to say no. So, I feel like, you know, when it comes to laws, you know, zoning bylaws and stuff, I don't really know how they're changed, honestly. That's another thing I'd like to learn about, but, you know, if the, if the rules say you can't do it, you can't do it until the majority say you can.
Understood. Thank you. Opening up to other board members, Mr. Bendo.
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm Mr. Hopper. Good evening. I have two questions for you. Number one, note on your application that you're also interested in the possibility of serving on the Planning Board. If you had to choose between the two, would you have a preference?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought that was the one I was interviewing for, but either one, I'm interested in.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't really know the difference between both of them, honestly, but either one of them appealed to me.
And my second question, have you ever been to a Board of Appeals' meeting before in the past?
I think I've been to one or two Planning Board meetings.
Planning Board?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
In this room, I think, yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, related to Earl Hopper by any chance?
Yep, he's my father.
Is your father, your mom was a schoolteacher for many years. You lived off of Woodman Street, take the left at Lucci's on the hill on the right?
Down on Clark Street.
Your folks?
Yeah.
At one time, they had the big bond.
Oh, yes, yeah, correct.
No, your mother, sweet old lady and dad's a really super, super guy. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the other applicant. If you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home and was looking for a variance from 20 feet to 15 feet in order to build in addition so that someone's kids could stay living with them or their parents, and the whole neighborhood supported that variance, noting that it could be a hardship or not and some discretion would be needed, therefore, hoping and helping these residents to stay here in the town. And if you were on that board, how would you vote?
And the budding neighbor was okay with it?
All the residents in the neighborhood, it's a house, five neighbors, all in favor of it, and obviously now they need to seek relief from the zoning bylaws. And your board has that authority to do it, you know, and everybody was in favor, lived in the neighborhood.
I mean, I guess as long as it didn't, it didn't like change the neighbor, you know, as long as it didn't change the neighborhood dramatically, you know, the look and feel of the neighborhood.
Sure.
I think I would be okay with it as long as the neighbors were. But if it was like a really weird change that would change it from, change that house from the rest of the neighbors and then other neighbors might be getting the idea that they can do wacky configurations with their homes, then, you know, then I, then I might be against it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else?
Briefly, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper, I have questions to complement my colleagues. I want to simply state that, that I appreciate you putting your name in and I appreciate you being here tonight. And as you may or may not be aware, we have eight candidates for one spot. And so, tonight, we're going to wrestle with that and try to come to some conclusion. And I don't know what the criteria we're each going to use, but it's going to, we're going to have some challenges there. So, I don't want to suggest anything by making this comment, but I would, I would, I would want to suggest to you that if another candidate is appointed, the fact that you've put your name out here tonight is impressive to me because a lot of folks are, generally, it's hard to get folks to put their name out there and to volunteer for positions. So, if it works out that you're not appointed this evening, I would just humbly request that you stay engaged, participate in the civics process, go to some meetings and become visible and get involved.
Yeah.
And another, these things open up periodically. And so, just stay engaged, whether it's Planning Board, a Board of Appeals, or other things, something might materialize. So, I'm not sure how this is going to go this evening, but I'm impressed that you're here, so stay on the ball in the future as it comes up.
Yeah, no, I plan on, you know, trying to be, like I said, I'm here to learn, so whether it's just picking up a little information at one, at one meeting, you know, I learn a lot every, every time I do come, so I just need to make a habit of coming to more. And, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't really start getting interested until 2016 and, you know, because I realize, you know, if I'm going to be, if I'm going to, you know, really understand my profession in construction, I need to understand, you know, what happens in these, at these meetings. I think these are important part of that learning process.
Okay. Any closing statements? You do have additional time, so is there anything else that you'd want to share with this board in closing?
Not, not really. I mean, you know, I just wanted to clarify, is this position, this is a five-year position and we meet monthly? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be fine with me. And you have to be a Wilmington resident, correct? If I like moved to another town, would that, would that mess anything up?
Wilmington resident, correct.
Okay. Wilmington resident, gotcha.
Wilmington resident, and the board meetings are scheduled the second Wednesday of each month at 7:00.
Okay. Got you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you again. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just a question for the town manager. This is actually filling the position by Charlie Boyle's leaving.
That's right.
It's not a new five-year position. It's filling a vacancy which could be the remainder of his appointment, is that correct?
Right. So, his appointment came up this, you know, a couple of months ago here when the board made appointments. So, the term of that position, which he has vacated, expires in 2021.
I mean, it's essentially almost the
Yeah.
The full term, but it's not a new term as the gentleman just stated.
That's right.
Correct. Yes, it's to fulfill the remainder, yes. Valid point. Thank you. Okay, we are running now, we're running a few minutes early, but if Connor Lahiff is Maybe a couple of minutes?
Do you want, do you want to see if he's, I don't, maybe he's in the hallway. I don't know if anyone's out there or not.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Just pause for a brief moment.
Do we know that all of these individuals are coming? Have they all confirmed?
They've all confirmed, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good commercial time, I guess.
George, when you're up in Fourth Poplar Street?
Yes.
If I could, I'm not, I'm just a parent, but quickly, hand up Nike Pop Warner's tonight. It's my understanding that we desperately need additional eighth-grade players. So, if anyone out there is an eighth grader and is interested in playing Pop Warner, we need, I think, at least three or four or five bodies, but preferably we'd like to get some more. So, anyone out there that may be watching and know someone that has an eighth-year-old or a large younger person that isn't already playing.
Okay.
We need eighth graders for the Pop Warner program.
All right. Once again, eighth graders, Pop Warner program.
There's a weight limitation, right? Is there a weight limitation?
No, that's the other thing too, which, I always made the A-team and the B-team. Like, I know you didn't play at the high school, we were in the freshman team together.
Because of the weight, I couldn't make the A or the B team.
Well, I, with great difficulty, I managed to make both, both teams. But the A-team is an unlimited weight class. It's just they're regulated by age, but the weight program for the A-team now is unlimited. So, if you have a large kid that's planning on playing football next year for the high school team, you really should get out there and practice and hone its skills on the Pop Warner program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
I hope the cable TV's going to cut all this daddy. I can't, when you do the, when you do the repeats.
Yeah.
So, just, just point of order, maybe, I don't know. This is, we're all in uncharted territory here, so I'm not, I don't know if there, we've never, none of us have had to go through this process before. The next appointment isn't here at the moment. I don't know, and I don't know some of these other folks by, by appearance. So, I know there's
Right.
A person in the room. I'm certainly receptive to the idea of jumping ahead.
Correct. I wanted to give it exactly until 7:30.
I'm sorry.
Yes. And then, Mr. Oliveri, are you here? Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll give it just another 30 seconds and then if you're okay with it, we would have you slide into that position and take you out of order if you're open to that. And then what we could do is we could slide Mr. Lahiff into the other position if, if he were to come. It seems like an eternity on TV, but it's really only been a minute and 30 seconds, so.
You mean it's an eternity up here?
Oh, absolutely. So, that's what I mean, but it's, I'm watching the clock and it's only been, it's only been one minute, well, now.
Should have plugged in that Pop Warner commercial.
Right, exactly. Mr. Oliveri, if you want to join us at the table here, we can proceed. Thank you. Good evening, once again. Thank you for being here. Once again, you can start with five minutes and then we'll ask some questions. Thank you.
My name is Frank Oliveri. My wife and I live at Four Oak Street in Wilmington. We've been living in Wilmington for, since 1985. We raised two children here and they went through the Wilmington school system and the sports system as well. I have two boys. My son Peter works for a law firm in Newton and my son Ryan works for the Zappos company in Las Vegas, Nevada. I've been a practicing attorney since 1967. I have an office in Somerville specializing in convincing law, estates and wills, and family law. I have relatives and friends who always say to me, "What is Wilmington like? Is it a nice town?" And I thought, well, my wife and I love Wilmington. We love the people that are here, the school system, the way the government is run. So, I'm always telling them, "Oh, if you're going to move to Wilmington, make sure you talk to me and, and look at the houses in Wilmington and the places that you can live here." And then it occurred to me when I saw the news item in the paper about this position on the Board of Appeals, I said, you know, "I used to be an assistant coach in Pop Warner and Little League, but that was back in the 90s. My kids are grown now and maybe I should do something for the town. Maybe I should put myself out for the town and offer something." So, when I saw that news item, I put my name in. Now, I noticed that the chairwoman mentioned the word "balance" earlier. That word caught my, caught my mind. And I know that being on the Board of Appeals, you have to maintain a balance, a balance And I know that being on the Board of Appeals, you have to maintain a balance, a balance between the development and the needs of the local owner and the quality of life in this town. And I hope that I could do that. I hope that I could maintain a balance and use common sense and have my legal mind apply to any of these situations. I won't fool you and say that I know much about Board of Appeals. I know the general concept about it, and I'm familiar with some of the statutes, but it would be a learning experience for me. But if I am appointed to the Board of Appeals, I'll know the law when the time comes for me to render decisions. I think that's it.
Thank you very much for that presentation. That opened it up to questions and comments from board members. Mr. McCoy?
I'm just pretty much, I mean, obviously you had a nice opportunity, you were here a couple, about a half hour, so you know the question that's coming. But I just want to ask the same question, and that's why I think it's important, just a simple question, and I'll elaborate if I need to. If you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals, and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home, and was looking for a variance from twenty feet to fifteen feet in order to build that home, and they have children that live with them, or their parents could stay living with them, and the whole neighborhood supported that concept and supported that variance, noting that it could be a hardship or not, to some discretion obviously you'd have to use, in order to keep these folks living in their hometown, how would you vote?
Well, Mr. McCoy, you would think that since I was in here earlier and heard that question a couple of times, I'd have a ready answer for you. But unfortunately, I don't. I think, I would have to see the circumstances. I would have to listen to the parties at, at the appeals hearing, and have to look at their demeanor. I'd have to listen to what the people said. I'd have to see why they wanted to have the setback, and then try to make, try to make a, a, a decision that was in the best interest of the town. I won't, I won't say that I probably would try to lean towards the homeowner. I will say that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Is your, my question for you is your, your practice in Somerville, most of your clients from that area, or do you deal with any clients from Wilmington?
Oh, yes. I have clients in Wilmington, Billerica, Woben, Burlington, all over kind of the northern part of the greater Boston area, Nedford, Malden, Wakefield. It's pretty spread out, actually. That happens over a period of years. Someone refers you to somebody who refers you to somebody.
That's a good problem, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
If I may, in complimenting Mr. Bendel's question, the, the nature of the client relationship you have with, most of those folks are, it's estate planning, and what's the nature of your, of your, do you have a specialty in your law practice?
I would say that probably sixty percent of my work is family law.
Okay.
Which is probably the most difficult you can be in. And I'd say the rest of it is in convincing, representing people buying and selling property.
Okay.
Estate planning, wills. But it's a general practice.
So you, in your, in your practice, you certainly have worked with municipalities in zoning issues, permit issues, I imagine, and other, other, you know, whether it's a planning board or a zoning board of appeals, I'm sure you've either guided or counseled your clients through some of those issues. In your experience and based on your knowledge, do you foresee that as a member of the zoning board of appeals, that you would have a frequent need to recuse yourself based on a professional conflict of interest with, with, with an applicant?
I would think not.
You would think not? Okay. And I appreciate that. I, I don't have a, a strong grasp on whether you would or wouldn't, so I'm kind of deferring to your legal expertise.
If I saw someone that was a client of mine appearing before the board, of course, I would recuse myself. You wouldn't, you wouldn't take the chance of doing something that, that really wasn't allowed.
Indeed.
Anything further? I have one for you, Mr. Oliveri. In terms of, as I had stated to the previous applicant, you know, there's a meeting once a month on Wednesdays. Sometimes these meetings can be very long. They can be over a period of several meetings, and sometimes they can be long durations of time. Any concerns about the time commitment and the availability to serve in this position for a twelve-month per year, you know, per year capacity over the next five years?
I would not see, I would not see anything that would interfere with my being able to represent, to be on the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Is this, is this your only interest? Is the Board of Appeals, or is something else via the gentleman?
Yes, it is.
Had other interests?
Anyone else?
If I may, just in conclusion, I'll echo what you were hearing me say to the other gentleman. I mean, if it, if, if at the end of this deliberative process, if it comes down that you're not the appointee, I would ask you to just stay engaged. I mean, I admire your skills and your talents, your ability to communicate. So the town, if, if we don't find it, that we can use your skills and talents in this position, I think there'd be other things that we could use your skills and talents in. So please, stay engaged if you, if, if it doesn't end up in this position.
I make that promise.
Deal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just, since we have some time to, I noticed that it says here that you're the Judiciary Committee Chair for the National Order of the Elks. Does that take up a lot of time, or is that?
No, I've been a member of the benevolent protective order of Elks. As you may know, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand members, a paternal organization nationwide, and I am basically their legal counsel. And it requires me to make email opinions for different people all over the country that might ask me questions about the statutes or bylaws of the Elks. Once a year, they have a national convention in which I go to. It's a seven-day convention, and we have other meetings, sometimes a regional meeting on a Sunday. I've been a member for fifty-four years, so I enjoy it. But it wouldn't be something that would interfere with this, if that's, if that's your thinking.
No, I'm just throwing it out to.
It's admirable.
Thank you. It is very admirable to be, to hunt something for that amount of time. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Oliveri, is there anything else you want to share with us as any sort of closing statement at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much once again for being here.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I think at this time, it's maybe suffice to say that we may have a non-attendee. So, Mr. Lepore, I do see that you are here early. Good evening. We're running ahead of schedule, and we had one applicant that did not arrive this evening, so we've moved things up with permission from the given candidates. We'd like to ask you if, if you'd be willing to step forward and go a little bit early, if that's possible. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, Redd. Been a few years here.
Yes, sir.
As we know, most of us, but for the community, my name is Ray Lepore. I've been a lifelong resident to Wilmington all my life. My family roots came here in approximately nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen thirty, obtained residence, and the same house that I, footprint mine is today, I'm, I'm in that same exact spot where they came and raised their family. As far as my credentials, I served on the Board of Appeals approximately four years, and then I decided to run for selectman, and I served a three-year term. The experience that I learned being on the Board of Appeals that I feel I can bring back to the community and also the Board of Selectmen is that I obviously know the rules and the regulations. I've developed land in the past, put up a few homes in a few years, and I know the rules and the regulations. As far as the, being on the Board of Selectmen, I feel I know how the town runs, I know the town council, I understand the criteria of, of areas that are very sensitive, such as, you know, certain areas that have chemical, water, zone twos. I understand all of that. I've experienced it, I see it every day. As far as also what I bring to the community, I feel, I'm out there every day. Everybody probably sees me riding around town and knowing my work with my sons that are basically running the business slowly and taking more time into it, and as I can step down a little bit, and I always feel that I see people. I, I understand people, I love working with people. I enjoy people. They come to me and they still ask me for my opinions. They ask me for my advice on situations. So I feel I have a strong point with that. And basically, you know, I, I just feel, you know, when I sat back the last few years, I still feel I have to do something for the, the community. Through my years, I've helped with T-ball, I did interleague a couple of years of baseball. I helped them, the, I'm building the soccer fields at the Shawshank School with the town. I helped with the Palmer Field right here in the back. So through the years, I've been always involved. I always see the town people, I see the police department, the fire department, and I see water and highway, and I feel very comfortable with the community. So I feel that, you know, I, I still have a lot to offer, and I see this position come about, and I just felt that I have the experience, I have the will, and I still have the enthusiasm to keep going forward. And so, I mean, so basically, that's about all I can say.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open it up to fellow board members to ask any questions and make any comments. Yes, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask you a question of us, other applicants. Raymond, if you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals, and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home, and was looking for a variance from twenty feet to fifteen feet in order to build an addition so that someone's kid could stay living with them or their parents, and the whole neighborhood supported the variance, noting that it could be a hardship or not, and some discretion is needed, therefore you'd be helping somebody staying here in the town relative to those residents, how, and how would you vote on that?
To me, it's very common sense. That's what my position would be, is actually to help people. I would vote, vote in favor to, to allow it, only because I feel that everybody should have opportunity, as long as it's not going to hurt the community, it's get the well support of the neighbors, and there is no opposition to it, and it meets most of the criteria and guidelines, I have no problem voting in favor.
All right, thank you. I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just, I don't have a specific question, if I may, Judy, but Ray, it's good to see you. I'm, you know, I had the great pleasure of working with you for three years when we, we collaborated together on this board, and I developed a very positive impression and a, a positive view of, of you and the work that you did. So thank you for that service, and thank you for putting your name in for consideration for this, for this appointment as well. You know, you said something, common sense, and that's, you know, I think that, that's the, the benchmark really of, of any position within the community, including the one that I sit in, is looking at the information that is in front of you and making a conclusion and casting a vote based on common sense and based on the, the facts and the information in front of you. So I admired that. You know, the only question I guess I have, Ray, is, is, and maybe we answered it in your, in your opening, but if I could ask you to expand on it a little bit more, is, is why now? You know, was it, I guess because this particular
Obviously, I don't think I'm at the older, I'm getting, you know, obviously I'm getting older, but I don't think I'm at that age that I have to step down and not feel that I want to be part of the community. My sons, my local name, have been in business since, believe it or not, since high school, nineteen sixty-six.
Wow.
Been self-employed, never worked for anybody basically but myself. My sons are doing the same. So I feel that, you know, we have a family name that's going to carry on in Wilmington. They, they have great respect from the community, myself, my two boys, from what I see and hear. And so I feel that, you know, I, I don't want to just grow old and just sit in a corner. I want to be part of something. And this is what I want to be. I, I love my town. My brother was a doctor here for twenty years. My family, like I said, was here since nineteen twenty-seven. And I know plots are being hard to get down the Wildwood Cemetery, but I already have mine.
Common sense, once again.
That's all it's about, common sense.
I have a follow-up that I can't, it's hard to follow up a question to that statement. But do you, in your profession, and you served on the board prior, so in your profession, do you foresee or do you anticipate that you would find yourself having to recuse yourself from, from deliberations frequently? Was, do you remember if that happened a lot then?
Absolutely not. You know, I, I was involved in the first, when Avalon Oaks came to Wilmington. I was, I was involved in, in, in that vote to, to, to approve it. And that carried on for a long time. There was no conflict of interest. Obviously, if I felt there would be, I, I would step aside. But, you know, it's funny, everybody used the word conflict, conflict of interest. You know, if you really look at the facts, everybody could be in a conflict of interest one way or the other. So it's basically going back to good, common sense of how you feel. And, and you know if something's right or wrong. And if you get it in your heart, let me tell you something, that's all you need, right, right from the heart. And that's what I always carried my life by.
Thank you, Ray.
So I'll, I'll jump in, Mr. Lepore. Obviously, we've asked a lot of similar questions to other candidates. This is not the first time I've asked this question. I've asked it to a previous candidate that came in. Is that, as you know, in these roles, a lot of times you deal with law and procedure, past practice, what the building codes are, the zoning bylaws, et cetera, and this regulatory means, so it's a fine balance between being a member of the Board of Appeals and upholding the best interest of the town, but at the same time, you're a compassionate resident that may see a friend or a neighbor or a fellow citizen that wants to achieve something that doesn't really necessarily see, seem so far out of the ordinary. Can you share a little bit about your philosophy, about how you find the balance of being able to say no when maybe in your heart you want to say yes?
To me, to me, it comes very simple. One, you have to look at each case as individual. Secondly, you have to weigh it out that if it meets certain criteria, if you know what the criteria are and what, what the hardship points are, if you have town council, it's very simple. If you're within doubt, I either go to the town manager and have the opinion of town council, if there's any cloud, cloudiness that I have. It's always worked in the past. I don't think I've ever abused my privilege, or have I ever hurt the community, or have I ever hurt a, an individual. So I feel that basically, if, if I look at that, understand what I'm, I'm looking at as far as an article, it's just, again, it's just a vote of yes or a no. And, you know, you can't please everybody. That's something I learned being a selectman my first term. You know, a good-hearted, kind guy, and fortunately, you, you get into those positions, it's not an easy seat to be in. You know, everybody's your friend, but at the same time, just like you said, you, you got people that voted for you and expect certain, much out of you, and you have to have the personality to say no. And I've learned that through the years of being experienced.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything further? Okay. Ray, is there anything else that you want to say as a closing statement to us as a board?
The only thing I would like to say is, you know, I would like to thank my, the board for giving me the opportunity to at least speak. I appreciate the questions each and every one you've asked me. I think they're legit questions. I think that the questions that you asked are in the best interest of the community. And therefore, that's where I stand. I always loved the community. I feel that you tonight, you're very fair, your questions were very honorable, and I respect you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for your
So at this time, we are definitely running ahead of schedule. Jackie, I've seen that you've come in. Good evening. And we are running ahead of schedule, so we have been trying to move candidates up. So if you're okay with it, I'd like to invite you to the table and ask if you don't mind going much earlier than originally scheduled to keep us moving along. So Jacqueline Centini.
So take your time to get yourself settled, so.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, may I approach to present you and the board with a point of reference for later on?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so at first, or second, actually, so I want to thank, thank you for the opportunity. I am nervous, a little nervous, just because this is something new for me, but on a different level. So thank you collectively as a board for letting me come and speak to you, and I know that I was able to speak to some of you prior, so I, I did appreciate that time, as well as on the phone, it was helpful. To To kinda give you an idea of myself, I am a resident for 20 years here. We moved here in 1996. I'm married to my husband, John, for 30 years, and I have three children, Alessandro, Stefano, and Jillian. To kinda give you my involvement with the town thus far, I am a volunteer for, at the polls. I started at the beginning of the year and very much enjoyed that because, at this time, with my children being a little bit older, I have this freedom a little bit, and the time to give some service that I think is always well-deserved in the community that you live in. I also, because of the work that I do, I like to keep my ears open when there's opportunities and the town can actually benefit. So I have initiated a placemaker grant for the dog park that we, actually Wilmington just opened up not too long ago. That is coming through the Greater Boston Board of Real Estate, and Deb Cipriani has been coordinating with me to get this, or to get information for me, and then we will know probably the end of September on that. Also, because the position that I was in as president of the Eastern Middlesex Association of Rail Tours, I was, we merged, so I do have executive leadership for the last five years in that capacity, and we moved, or we merged to the Greater Boston Board. Greater Boston Board has scholarships that I was able to get information and bring over to the high school. It's a need-based ability, or, so I was able to give them that information. I hope that was helpful, I think it was, the councilor did say it was, helpful on So in any time that I can advocate to get things for the town that I live in, I always will advocate for that. I, we also were able to give money to the food pantry, and that was through the Massachusetts Association of Rail Tours. We got $2,500. So I like to keep my ears open on that capacity. Now, I wanna kinda give you what my, my resume is, what I gave you. I would like to speak to you about my experience, going back to becoming president of a board that has 1,100 members. I had plans and goals, although they got, they were changed because we were open enough to see potential and a benefit when the Greater Boston Board came to our, came to us on the executive board. So communication, listening, making sure that the members of the rail tour community and of our board were taken care of. Eastern Middlesex Board was 74 years old, so it wasn't something that we took lightly. We needed to make sure we vetted out all of their questions, concerns, and make sure at the end of the day that the benefits got the benefit, that the members were the beneficiary of our merger. On government affairs, I can tell you my experience there is that we go down to Washington, I've gone down to Washington for the last several years, on federal level, on the state level, we go to Day on the Hill, that was, that's in June, and we discuss issues there. And, you know, we always wanna keep, keeping the pulse on the housing market and how things are being situated in towns and state levels is very important. We educate them, we educate the legislators, and we make sure that, again, each community is aware of what's happening. So I think my five minutes is coming to an end. My goal is to seek, is in seeing the growth of our community on a continual financially responsible and healthy growth, to benefit the residents of Wilmington, our young families, millennials, our elderly, to the veterans. And interesting enough, just a side note, my kids, since they've all kind of, you know, gone doing their own things, they're like, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna sell the house and, you know, downsize? And I'm like, no, I, I love my house, and I don't plan on going anywhere for a while, a long time. So I guess in closing, again, I wanna thank you for this opportunity, and I can give you, you know, answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I see, you know, obviously, the handout, the resume was put with the application, the handout that you have here provided some good background and kind of a succinct synopsis of what you've done. I do see that you are, have been in the real estate community, you've been on some boards and commissions, I know you've had some governmental affairs, and you talked about some of the town, community involvement. I have asked other applicants that have come forward, and I'll ask you the same question, is that when you're in a Board of Appeals role, it's a very difficult balance between upholding statute and zoning regulations and past practice of the town and building code and things of that nature, where at the same time, these are the same people that you're gonna see in the community at the soccer field, in the grocery store, that are your friends and neighbors, that may have very realistic, genuine intentions in terms of building structures or doing things on their personal property, and it's not necessarily just residential, by the way, it may be small businesses as well. So you have to have that fine line of when to say yes and when to say no. So can you speak to a little bit about your philosophy, how you would navigate through conditions where you're in a very difficult decision-making arena, in how, what your philosophy is in doing that and carrying that through?
Well, to answer that question, I know you, you're not, it's difficult to make, you know, everyone happy 100% of the time. I understand that. At the end of the day, it, I honestly believe it has to go back to really the majority of how it's gonna benefit everyone. And, and I, personally, I'm not about preferential treatment at all, and I think in fairness, it really needs to see if it, if it's, if it's good for the community at the end of the day. How will, how will everyone benefit from that? That's what, that's about-
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Laporte?
Yeah, thank you. There's no question, you have a very impressive resume, and I notice you're a CJ major, you graduated 2001. Did you ever do anything in the criminal justice field?
I, at the time that I got it, I had, well, let's put it this way, I had a plan, and my plan was to have a family, and then I went back and I got my degree. When I got my degree, I got a great call from one of the departments, but I was actually too old. So it was a little bit of a downer, but obviously, that wasn't meant to be. The DEA wanted younger people, and who knows what would've happened, but I have a great family.
No, like I said, impressive resume. Just got a question I'd like to ask and touch upon something else. If you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals, and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home, that was looking for a variance from 20 feet to 15 feet in order to build an addition so that someone's kids could stay living with them or their parents, and the whole neighborhood supported that concept of what they wanted to do, noting that it could be a hardship or not, and some, some point of discretion would have to be made relative to this, how would you, and you would be keeping these folks in Wilmington, how would you vote on that?
Well, I'd have to look at all the facts, really. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think, I see things changing in Wilmington and all towns, that, you know, the developments have been, are changing. We wanna, I know Wilmington doesn't have accessory living. It's just something that needs to be possibly looked at, but, you know, right now, I, I don't feel comfortable actually giving you an answer because things change. But I understand that as time goes on, who knows, maybe it would be something that the majority would agree upon.
I just got something to ask. No, I totally agree. Sometimes, you know, you change your way of feeling, you wanna try to keep people in town, and obviously, different type of housing is definitely needed in the town. I just got something I need to touch base with you on. At the annual town meeting of 2016, three months ago, when Article 50, the over 55 housing article, came up for discussion, you went to the microphone and asked, could you please ask the question again? When a voter wanted more information, you then proceeded to go through a box of files, and I noticed that you handed, out of the file, you handed some notations to Mike Newhouse relative to those files, and it had to appear to apply to Article 50, the over 55 housing. Could you please tell me, what was your role relative to the article? What is your connection to Mr. Newhouse? And do you have any financial interests associated with Article 50? Perhaps as a real estate agent, or are you gonna get any listings? Because you were active in that article, and I'm just wondering if you could just talk to me about that.
I don't, I have no recollection, if you have me on tape, I don't believe I was handing any information to Mike Newhouse. So, but as a 55 and older community, I agree with it. Again, that is something that would be in the best interest. There's a lot of activity for it.
Just a quick question. Did you speak on that? Because a resident, I had a question, and you, didn't you go to the mic and say to that interview, could you repeat the question? And then later on, did you also say that, I like to move the question? You never said that.
No. No. I, what I did say, I was only at the microphone once, and I moved the question at the very end.
You didn't ask to repeat the question again?
Nope.
Okay, all right. I wanna thank you, okay. Thank you.
So the other question that you had, just to get it out there, is Article 50 was with reference to-
The 55 housing.
The over 55, correct?
Right, then, okay, then I stand corrected. I thought, I didn't hand any files over at all. Okay, well, you gave the answer, I wanna thank you. All right.
I didn't have, I didn't have any files for him, or any, I, nothing.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, thank you. Briefly, thank you. Ms. Santini, thank you for being here today and for your volunteerism or your desire to volunteer. I'm impressed with your credentials and the amount of leadership positions that you've been in and continue to be in, and really, that's what is the impetus of my question. While, while the myriad committees and organizations on which you are a member and/or its leader, does that tap your time? Are you gonna have, do you have, or do you foresee that you'll have the time available to give to the community when it calls upon you?
Absolutely, absolutely. Not, last year, perhaps not, but this year, yes. My capacity at the Greater Boston Board, I'm a director, even if I was at a director, my work is during the day, meetings are during the day. We're here tonight, so it's, and I, and I, I keep busy. I need to be involved and want to be involved.
If I may, Madam Chair, one last question that I have is, and I've asked some of the other folks that have been in the room, so I'm not picking on you here. As a rail tour, do you foresee-
Thank you for saying it correctly.
I learned that on television. Do you foresee that you would have an inordinate amount of times where you would have to recuse yourself from hearing a case? And I know you can't look into the future and crystal ball it, but does, do you think that your, your profession is, is a higher incidence of conflict of interest with some of the issues that would be, that would come across the board?
I don't believe so, and I, and I give you my, my full integrity, that if it ever did come up, that I would definitely recuse myself if I needed to, without doubt.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything further? Yes?
Mrs. Santini, good evening. My question for you is, I'm just trying to get a sense, to Mr. Shampoo's point, trying to get a sense, in your practice, I asked the previous applicant the same question, in your practice, do you primarily deal with people in Wilmington or is also outside of Wilmington?
I actually have my license in New Hampshire. I go to Southern New Hampshire. I work in Wilmington, I work, you know, these days, people are looking for easy access to Boston and New Hampshire, so that's why Wilmington is so great, because we have two trains, we have easy access to the highway. It's, yeah, we have a lot more traffic because everybody's cutting through, but, yeah, I'm kind of like, a little bit, just, you know, 93, 128 corridor.
Sure, thank you.
Anything further? Anyone? Jackie, is there anything additional that you'd wanna share with this board as you close? Any closing statements?
I just wanna thank you for this opportunity, being here. It's probably, as much as I have been involved with my board and state and federal committees and whatnot, and being involved a little bit in local, that this is a little different, but I, I would definitely take on the challenge and want to better my community, because I, like I said, I do wanna stay for as long as I can. It's a great, it's a great town, I've seen great things, I've, I've been here when they were doing the Plaza over, you know, the, you know, there's been a lot that's happened, I've seen a lot of growth, and it's good growth, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So procedurally, we need to have a little chat as a board. We received a notification that Mr. Lopez unfortunately will not be able to join us here this evening, so that was recent information, and it appears that Mr. Lahiff has, is not able to join us as well. So we certainly are running, as a result of that, officially a half an hour ahead of schedule. Jeff has reached out to Mr. Brozo to see if it's possible for him to come in early, and he has not yet responded. So as a result of that, we do have a gap in time. So even under the best plans, even though we've had RSVPs, we have to go with the flow, so to speak, in terms of navigating through having one more applicant that is not present to be speaking with. So we have no additional Tom business to discuss at this point. How do you suggest we get through it, or any other announcements or any sort of general business that you have then?
None that I had planned on talking about this evening, no.
Okay. So, so just talking about procedure when the time comes, just to kind of prepare people, is that, once we finish with this, what I would be looking for as a board is to do a roll call to each one of you individually, to have your preferred name, your top choice to come forward. I would say, in my estimation, having reviewed the information- I would say, in my estimation, having reviewed the information, and I'm speaking for myself, that there's probably more than one candidate that is suitable for this position, and as you know, all of these candidates, even though they're not here, may not be here tonight, they're still an eligible consideration. So, what I would be looking to do is, is to go do a roll call down the line to get your preferred preference, and that's not to say that by putting your number one choice forward, that you're saying that other people are not qualified, or that you're in essence voting against any other choice. It's just, at the end of the day, there may be one or two or three, or however many that you deem to be a worthy candidate, but at the end of the day, you need to make a recommendation. So, in doing that, the, the choice to do it that way is so that every member of this board feels that you have had the right to come forward with your first choice, and you certainly would have the opportunity to provide any additional comments along with that at that time, and then procedurally, we'll move on from there. Mr. Shampoo, you have a question?
Sorry, just think, yeah. So, that certainly sounds completely fine. Will there be, so when the vote is taken, will there be a motion and a second? How's that, how do you foresee that?
Go through a formal motion process, but this is just a, you know, put your first choice out there, and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
So. At this point, do we want to potentially recess for a period of time?
Yeah, I think that's not inappropriate.
All right, at this point, will we make a motion to recess for 15 minutes? And if the applicant comes forward, we can obviously restart. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Page second.
Sure.
Okay, all of us in favor? Call the Board of Selectmen meeting back to order at 8:24, and at this time, I'd like to resume our interview schedule. Mr. Paul Brozo, thank you very much for being here and for coming early.
I had the local TV on, so I saw you guys running a little ahead of schedule, so I thought I'd get moving.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, you got the job.
I'd like to start off first, just by thanking the board members for having this special meeting to hear, you know, the applications for all of us candidates. From what I, you know, I didn't get to see a lot of it, but I saw, it sounds like there are a lot of great candidates that came here today that have longstanding residency in the town. My wife and I are relatively new to the town, as you probably saw in my, my letter to the board. We moved here last September, so this September will be our, our first full year. I'm, I am originally from Michigan, and I studied political science at Kalamazoo College, and then I went to law school at Michigan State University. After, after that, I moved to New York City. I took the New York Bar. I've been a practicing attorney in New York for, this will be my fourth year. I practice still with the firm today in New York, but I do so 100% of the time remotely from our house on 300 Woburn Street, which is a great privilege. We have, we recently, we have a, almost a four-month-old boy, our first, and that was part of the, our reasoning for choosing Wilmington. We did a lot of research where to move. My wife's family is from just across the border in New Hampshire, and her brothers live in Boston. She took a position at Wayfair.com. I'm sure you've heard all the terrible jingles of their TV ads, but in doing so, that was our, our first step towards getting closer to family and establishing our roots. We were, we knew that we were going to have our first child soon, and we started looking. And in doing so, part of it was, we wanted to be in a good position for her, her job in Boston. Wilmington's perfectly located for, for a commute into the city, and we were halfway between her parents' house. So, we found, we thought we found, just in location alone, the perfect, the perfect town for us to be in, and then we started doing the research, and we saw that the schools were, were wonderful, and that's really important to us right now. And just started looking at the neighborhood. We, we heard, we heard great things, and we were fortunate enough to purchase our first home last September. I have had a, a call to serve, we'll say, from, from a very young age. I think that that was also part of why I wanted to become an attorney as well, although now I'm serving corporate America, but that's a little different. I have been a member of many nonprofits, and I just, I think that it was, the, the whole precursor towards talking about Wilmington was mainly to say that I wanted to wait for my civic, I wanted to find where we were going to establish our roots someday, to kind of get my start in local governance, and I've been just itching to get to that point. So, I'm, I'm happy to finally be at that point, and I, I feel a strong sense, you know, to serve where I, where I live. We have a strong sense of pride in the community, and in Wilmington. And based on, a little bit about my background, as I said, I, I'm an attorney, and I have, I think that my legal background in my four-year, or my three years in law school, and my four years now practicing, I think that that will lead very well towards this position. I'm, I'm meticulous when it comes to reading through statutes, contracts, and I like to, I like to think that I'm a, I'm a good, I'm good at analysis, and taking the facts of certain things, and applying them to the statutes and the rules and what we have in front of us. And I think that's important for this board seat. And I think there, there are going to be situations where you're gonna have some facts that might, I mean, that's essentially the, the role, is that you have to look at, we're looking at variances and, and what can go, you know, what, what the law of, of our town is in the bylaw, and, and if we can adjust things so that we can fit the needs of certain citizens, and, and I think that's important, and it's always a case-by-case basis. I, in studying law, I worked, I was a law clerk for the United States Maritime Administration, and I, while I was there, a lot of what I did was, I had to kind of parse through the United States Code and fit certain factual situations to see whether or not the Marad, Maritime Administration, was able to do certain things. In fact, one of our big projects was, we were, we assisted with taking super ferry from Hawaii to help the, the crisis in Haiti during the earthquakes, and we had to kind of look at the law and whether or not we can, we could do that. But that's just to say that, that I have experience in looking at code and looking at statutes and kind of applying the facts, and I mean, that was also through years of law school, completely. That's what we did, so. But beyond that, I, I'm, I'm just excited to become a part of the town. I'd welcome any questions, if, I know you have my resume, so I don't want to belabor anything, but I also want to point out that I, I have access to certain, certain resources that allow, and I'm sure the town, the town does as well, but to, to look at certain case law, for instance, based on certain, if something came to the board, a variance request, to see what a, a future court might say, based on what the decision is or whatnot. These are just things, these are, this is lawyer nerd talk right now, so it's kind of right up my alley, and anyways, I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring. It's, I, as I said, I, we're, we're new to the town. I hope you don't hold that against me. I, we are already so prideful of where we live. In fact, I, I wanted to get involved in the Fourth of July Committee before the, the carnival. The fact that the town has a Fourth of July House was just incredible to me, and part of our decision to move here. I'm kidding, but anyways, we're, you know, based on the, the committee's, the board's decision, I respect it, and in one way or another, I'd love to be part, but I think this is a great, a great opportunity. So, I thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brozo. I did receive, as did all of the members on the board, your detailed narrative letter that you sent along with your application, so certainly, all of us have had the benefit of receiving that and reading it, and I just want to state to you, first of all, thank you for coming in early, as I thank the other applicants for going early. I don't know, I know you mentioned that you were listening at home, so just for the benefit of feeling that you receive a proper welcome and greeting from this board and from the town, is that I know I can speak for a lot of my colleagues in saying how much we appreciate you stepping forward, as we do the other applicants, to express your desire to volunteer for the town of Wilmington, and it's through volunteerism, we're all volunteers on this board, although we're elected, that we need people like yourself and the, and the other people in the room that want to step forward and volunteer for, for various boards and commissions. As you know, there's only one position that's open, and we've been saying that consistently to the other applicants, so this isn't me building you up for some letdown information, it's really, has not been decided. But there were, in my estimation, having heard the applicants tonight and reading what's on papers, there is perhaps more than one qualified candidate for this position, but there can only be one that fulfills the vacancy. So, I just wanted to express my gratitude for you stepping forward, appreciate you coming out here tonight. You know, perhaps your, your calling will be to this position, and if it's not, Mr. Shampoo has said to other applicants, please continue your desire and enthusiasm to, to work and be a part of the community, because I'm certainly biased from the years that I've spent here, but it is a great town. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. I'll open it up to the fellow board members to ask any questions. I would like to reserve the right to ask a question as well, so.
Most definitely, and I think that's pretty incredible that there were, there was so much interest, so, you know, and I was kind of late to get into the process here, so sorry to whoever had to adjust the, the roll to fit me in at 8:45, but I think that, that says something about the town that we live in and the citizens that live here, so that's great.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'll open it up to any questions or comments. Anyone? Mr. Shampoo?
I'll just, I'll talk about the, the elephant in the room.
Sure.
You haven't been here but a year yet.
That's right.
And so, your credentials are very impressive, and based on them, and, and just sort of the few moments that we've had to get to know you here, it seems like you would have the, the chops for this job, or really, any other. But the issue that I'm wrestling with is, the decisions that have to be made by a member of the zoning board of appeals often have some historical context, and decisions will be made about residents who've either lived here for their whole lives, or potentially generations, and I guess, how will you juxtapose that, that sort of, the fact that you don't have a, a full context of the history of the issue that's in front of you as a member of the Board of Appeals with the decision that you have to make?
Sure. I, I think that there, there are two parts to, to my answer. One is, as an attorney and the legal education that I got, that I, that I received, I, I think that when you look at a, at a particular case, because essentially, we're going to be looking at things on a case-by-case basis, you need to take all of the information that you have in front of you, all the facts of the case, of the facts of the matter, and apply them to the situation. And I think that that, the fact that I haven't been here but a year, I think that leads to me to have more of a, a subjective look, and, and I'm able to kind of, you know, put some of the historical aside while knowing the history. Certainly, I would want to read up on the history of each matter and, and know what the background is, and, and that's part of the fact gathering part. And then I think that, at that point, then, then it's easy to make your decision by applying those facts, other facts, to the statutes, to, you know, to the bylaw. So, I don't think that, I, I hope the board doesn't see that as a, as a negative, that I've been here just a year, because I think that having somebody new and having somebody with a background like this, that, that has a, an analytical background, and was kind of taught, you know, schooled in this particular area, I think that's going to help. So, I don't, I don't want to see that as a negative, I, I almost see that as a positive. And I think that not every board member is privy to certain historical issues, and I'm sure that they've all done their due diligence in each matter as well, so I think that, you know.
It's a fair answer. I think, if I didn't ask, if someone was going to, and I think, I think the community probably would want, if wanted that question asked, so I appreciate your answer.
No, no problem, and I appreciate the question, and I, and I will also say that, just being, just because I want to be involved in town, I, I, I don't want to say I toyed with the idea, but it came to my mind with the previous selectman race, Board of Selectmen race, hey, should I throw my hat in the ring? But I knew that wasn't realistic, because it's an elective position, first of all, first and foremost, and, and I hadn't done my, done my time. I hadn't done my time in, in getting involved in certain committees. I know, Mr. Bendel, you, you have a, a lot of prior experience with the town in certain committees, and, as you all do, but I had done research for the vote, for the election, so I, I set, again, I, I don't want to say that I toyed around with it, I just had a thought like, oh, I wish I was around town a lot, a little bit longer, so that I can get involved in that way and throw my hat in the ring. So, when this position came up, it was kind of a, a no-brainer. Hey, at least, let's, let's introduce myself and my family to the town. I have my, my wife Kate and son Noah, who's going to be four months old here pretty soon, back home. Noah shouldn't be watching this, but anyways, I'm just happy to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Noah, is that your first child?
That's our first child, Noah.
Hey, God bless.
Thank you.
Really, really, I didn't mean that. I'm just going to ask you a question, all right, if I could, and there's no question, other resumes were fantastic as well, you've got a great resume here, and obviously, welcome to the community. If you were given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Appeals, and an applicant was seeking relief from the setback to a home, and was looking for a variance from 20 feet to 15 feet in order to build an addition, so that someone's kid could stay living with them, or their parents, and the whole neighborhood supported that variance at the Board of Appeals meeting, noting that it could be a hardship or not, and obviously, you need to use discretion when it comes to a hardship, and, and obviously, the resident is pleading to the Board of Appeals, you know, we've heard a lot, you know, pros and cons, you know, I really want to say in the town, if I can't get this, and I have to move out, and some people say this, and they do that, but a lot of folks, when they say certain things, they mean it, and that's important. How would you vote on something like that?
To, to be fair, I don't know that I could give you an answer of how I would vote on it tonight. I, I think that it kind of leads back full circle to the fact that it's, it's about a fact gathering process. So, first and foremost, you'd have to get the facts, and I think as a Board of Appeals member, you have to be, you know, you have to kind of come with clear mind and, and not just go with your, your gut, because we're all, we're all good people, we're all here trying to help serve our community, so nobody wants to see anybody go through hard times and, and be denied a permit request for that. I, I will say that part of, part of the fact gathering process, I note that the purpose of this, of, of the Board of Appeals, there's a whole, in, in section 1.2, there's a whole paragraph as to what the purpose is, and a lot of that has to do with the reasons why we have the Board of Appeals, and to, to avoid traffic congestion, to, goes to natural resources, encourage housing per, persons for all income levels. So many things come into play with a decision by the Board of Appeals, I think, that, that's why I say I don't want to give you an answer right now. Of course, I want to say, oh, yeah, of course, we want to do whatever we can to help the citizens and the residents, but, but I think, just, just to say that that's, and that's also to, to speak to the importance of the Board of Appeals, and that there is so much at play when it comes to making these decisions, so. Short answer, and, and we learned this the first day of law school, is, the answer is, it depends. But of course, you know, we want...
You have a lot of other answers as well, but anyway.
Yeah.
If you were on the Board of Appeals and a client came before the board, how would you act to that? How would you react to that?
Well, part of what I do at my, my law firm is, I help with the administration, and we look at conflicts of interest, so I'm very keen on, on conflicts, so, you know, if, I, I don't see that being an issue based on the, the practice that we, you know, the type of law that we do. But if it does, I would simply have to, you know, recuse myself for that particular matter, you know, and, but I don't, I don't see that being an issue, but... you know, and, but I don't see that being an issue, but I mean, I would certainly do the due diligence to make sure for certain things that, you know, there is no conflict there.
That's the answer that I was looking for. All right, now, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
If I could just ask a question and kind of jump in here as a sitting member, and just want to preference my commentary and question with respect and just seeking to understand the evolution of your resume, and just to kind of, for my own framework, is that, you know, obviously the dates are here that you see, and for the public, you know, I see, looking at your 2012 experience with Sullivan and Cromwell, and then going to Sidley-Austin, and then going to Sullivan and Cromwell, and then Simpson-Thatcher, and then Simpson-Thatcher and Bartlett again. Can you just kind of, because it's quite a few, it's quite a few jumps in a very short period of time, and there's really no other way to say it other than just to call it right out to you and help me understand, you've gone, you know, past-present to the same law firm more than once, and so is it freelance, is it, you know?
No, and I appreciate the question, and that's one that I would commonly get if I was ever interviewing, which I'm not, I hope my employer's not watching. So I kind of climbed the ladder in the New York law world very differently than most people. I started off as a contract, kind of like a contract law clerk, for instance, before I was admitted to the New York bar. So I worked on certain cases as, kind of like an intern. Through that work, when I was admitted to the bar, I was hired immediately from, by Sullivan and Cromwell on the first case. I think that I was sworn in on a September 10th, and I was working on my first case September 13th. I stayed with Sullivan for some time, about a year and a half, and then I was afforded a more permanent and better track, career track position with Simpson-Thatcher. And you'll see that I have the two here, back-to-back, Simpson-Thatcher, and it was my last position as well, and Simpson-Thatcher still, and that's just because I was promoted from a staff attorney to a full-fledged attorney with our risk management and professional responsibility group within the firm. And I'll say that that was part, that shift was geared somewhat towards getting me to Boston, because we knew that we were already looking to be closer to family. So when we, when this role opened up, the HR director came to me and said, I think that this is something that we may allow you, you know, you would be able to do 100% remotely for the firm, if we can get, you know, talk the global director into allowing that. So I had about a four-month kind of transition into that role, and then I moved up here. And I think I'm one of two or three attorneys of 850 that are allowed to work remotely full-time, so, and I only, I only say that just to show that, you know, I am dependable, and just this track record, I, it wasn't about choppiness, it was about kind of like moving up in the ranks, so.
Absolutely. No, I get that.
I appreciate the question, Noah, and I'm glad you asked that, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to be fair to you, that I didn't want to walk away with any preconceived notions, because I certainly can respect a career track, you know, certainly not in law, but my resume looks a little choppy in a very similar fashion, and I think I have a great story behind it, but, so I wanted to hear it from you, just to speak on the longevity piece, because it was two months, two months, and then it really, I was thinking, you know, maybe it was a-
I was just a city boy, born and raised in North Detroit, you know, the Journey song, any Journey fans?
Yeah.
And I went to Michigan, or I'm sorry, I went to New York, and I knew nobody in New York, so I had to kind of, you know, get my foot in the door where I could and slowly build a reputation, so.
Okay. And I don't want to bog down the questions from my colleagues, but to that point, you indicated that you're working 100% at home. Do you, you know, this is a five-year, well, you're assuming the remainder of a five-year seat, which is essentially almost a full five years. So I know we don't all have a crystal ball, you know, 2021 is a long ways away, it's kind of scary when you think of those numbers, but the board is scheduled to meet the second Wednesday of each month at 7:00. The meetings can be for extended periods that night, the cases can be for extended periods of time. I don't want to assume, but, you know, but I would assume to some degree there may be some travel involved in your job, and obviously as you're on, you know, a career track, do you see any issues with being able to fulfill this obligation and be able to regularly attend meetings during that time?
No, thank you for the question. No, I don't see any problem with that regard. I've actually only been back to New York once since I moved up last June, and that was simply to meet a new associate director in our group. I am on the phone and email probably 75, 80 hours, 80 hours a week. It absolutely would not affect, you know, my, it wouldn't affect, have any issue with timing or travel or anything, I'd be fully in. We're here for the long run in Wilmington, that's why it took us a long time to find our home and where we wanted to establish our roots and pick the right school system, and we're excited, we have great neighbors. So we love where we are, and I see the longevity issue as not being one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? During that, okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with the board as a closing statement?
I don't think so, I just want to thank you for your time. I know that this is a special hearing, and it's been a long night, so I, and I want to thank you all for your service as well. I aspire to be, you know, part of my community like you guys have been, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that brings our interviews to a close. I will indicate once again that Mr. Lahiff and Mr. Lopez were not able to attend at this point. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight candidates. As I had indicated during a break in the speaking, that we certainly will have discussion, and I'm going to be looking for people to put forward their first-choice candidate. As I mentioned to all of you once again, thank you very much for being here and putting your name forward. Obviously volunteerism is one of the greatest assets that any community can have, and we certainly have a very pervasive trend of that in Wilmington. Having said that, in my estimation, I feel that there are multiple candidates that have presented here tonight that would be worthy of this position. Unfortunately, there is only one position open, so please don't take any of the conversation that we're about to have as that we're necessarily voting against any one person or any pool of candidates, we're simply doing our due diligence and our part as elected members of the Board of Selectmen to bring forward on an individual level and then collectively at some point to a vote who we think would be our top choice, and then obviously it would go to a majority vote of the board at some point this evening. So I just wanted to reiterate that, I know it's difficult to have one person go out with good news and other people go out with not-so-good news, but I can't express enough how much we appreciate you coming forward and expressing interest in this position. So having said that, I'd like to turn it over to discussion. We can do discussion first, and then I can call for your top choice after. What is the pleasure of the board? I don't have any hard and fast rule or opinion as to how that should be handled, but I will be going right down the line, asking for your top choice. Does anyone have any discussion that they want to bring forward at this time, or do you want to frame that around your top choice?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the eight candidates as well for volunteering to step up and to serve in this important position. Resumes of all of them are extremely, extremely impressive, and the town's fortunate to have these individuals come forward, and hopefully if, you know, the other seven individuals who are not selected would be, or would consider another position as a volunteer in the town and one of the many boards that we have here in Wilmington. But very impressive group of candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo those comments, Mr. Kira, thank you. I also want to thank all the applicants. I think, obviously, it's been said several times up here, I think we're all thoroughly impressed with the resumes, most of, obviously, very impressive professional and community resumes, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to serve, regardless of how long they've been here, I think it's terrific, you know, certainly that's what Wilmington was built on, people willing to serve, and so I'll be honest with you, I'm wrestling with, you know, two or three names in my head right now, and, but again, I think that there's a number of people here on this list that could, you know, fulfill the position tremendously, so thank you to those who had the courage to come here tonight and put themselves out there, having recently done it, I know what it's like, and I really appreciate those who have applied.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Greg, I concur, you know, this is, this is a problem. We have the best of problems, I think, right now, in that we have so many really qualified individuals to consider. And it's, like I say, it's a good problem to have, but it's still a problem, and as I sit here, knowing that we're within moments having to say a top one, I've got a top three that I can't, I'm trying to think of criteria in my head that I can apply that will help tip the scale of one over another, and, you know, there's no one that's sort of rising, I feel like I'm the bachelor, for my TV folks out there. Yeah, so it's a challenge, and I commend all of the applicants, I really do, it's, you know, it's not easy to put yourself out there and subject yourself to scrutiny and challenge, and so I thank everyone that did put their name in for doing so, and I hope that the bummer of a feeling that you might feel if you don't get nominated tonight or appointed tonight doesn't dissuade anybody from continuing to participate and pursue other ways to volunteer and participate, not only just in the government bodies, but in the myriad charitable activities that are going on throughout town, so stay involved because seats open, and if you stay visible and you stay in communication with folks, opportunities will arise if this isn't the one. So thank you all for stepping up, and as I talk, I'm going to keep on talking until I come up with a decision. I'm kidding, I'll pass it over.
Okay, anything further?
Yeah, just if I could, thank you, just like with Selectmen Kira and everybody else said, I want to thank everybody, all the resumes are impressive, and really appreciate everybody coming out, and, I don't know, you say the bachelor, I hope your wife's not watching, but anyway, you know, man.
She'd love that.
You know, so, but once again, I want to thank all the folks coming out, and it says a lot about the community and about the folks that live in here. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so I'm not going to make it in any particular order, but I'll start, go right down the line, so I'm going to start to my right. Mr. Bendel, if you want to share your topic.
Sure, I, again, very difficult, and appreciate the opportunity to go first, Madam Chair, thank you.
So do I.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Bachelor. I, seriously, I am, again, impressed with this individual's resume, their volunteerism in the past and the present. I was impressed at how active they were in town on multiple, excuse me, active not only in town, but at a state and federal level, and I think that that could be beneficial to the town and its residents, and I appreciate the work that she's doing currently, so I would nominate Mrs. Santini.
Okay. Mr. Kira?
Again, like I said, I am impressed with everybody's credentials. We are losing a gentleman who served on the Board of Appeals for 24 years, so I think that the individual I'm going to put forward has the experience on the Board of Appeals, was a former selectman and a chairman of the board, and losing someone with 24 years and we're coming, we probably, in my mind, would need someone with that experience and background, so I'm going to put forward the name of Raymond Lepore.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go right in line, just to work in line with going right down the row here. I also agree that there are multiple candidates that would be, do very well in this position. Obviously, we have to choose one, and I have not worked directly with Ms. Santini, but I do have a working knowledge of her experience through real estate as well as through the board, certainly not shy in indicating that, we have not cooperated on any sort of business deals, but I definitely have a working knowledge of seeing her apply her skillset at the local level, as well as at the state level and the federal level, and I've seen what I believe to be transferable skills that I think that she would be an asset to the Board of Appeals, and I think that she would have the aptitude and the willingness and the earnest desire to get up and running and integrate into that board very well. That's not to say that other applicants would not do the same, but I feel that out of the three that I'm looking at to choose, I feel that Ms. Santini would be my choice at this time. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, all the applicants, I appreciate the effort that they came to this board, and I will say it, I served with Ray on the Board of Selectmen for a period of time, Ray was on the Board of Appeals, I believe experience can make a difference, and I can say that when Ray served on the board, you know, we agreed on a lot of things and we disagreed, and we butted heads, quite frankly, many times, but I believe Ray served many years on the Board of Selectmen, he also served on the Board of Appeals, I believe his roots run deep in this community, his family, and I go with experience, that's the reason why I do that, so I'd cast a vote for Raymond Lepore.
Okay. Mr. Shampoo?
So by my calculation, we've got the two-and-two scenario. Oh, I think I'd rather be first than last now. Yeah, I continue to be challenged, and I don't want to belabor the point, I think the word experience has been uttered in a couple of different contexts by my colleagues, and that does weigh heavily on my mind, and notwithstanding the incredible and valuable credentials and resumes of some of the applicants, one applicant's experience rose above, in my mind, I think, than a couple of the others, and helped me, I guess, tip that proverbial scale, and so I'm leaning more heavily towards Mr. Oliveri, and I think that would be where I would cast my vote, not just to, you know, create controversy here, but in fact, I do believe that he is the most fit for this particular spot at this particular time.
Okay. Okay, so having heard first choice for all members of this board, it appears that we have three names that have come forward as potential nominations or candidates. We obviously are going to be striving to make a decision, we're going to be working towards a formal motion, so we can continue this discussion, and certainly anyone at this time certainly can state their case and put forth a motion of any kind, if they want to call for a formal vote, but we can continue discussion to the extent that this board wants to continue that.
So point of order, Madam Chair, on that, if a motion is made and seconded, we would then go to a discussion phase on that motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then we will call for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Does the second, is the second needed?
Yes.
Okay.
For a motion. So, to step right out there, I mean, obviously, we've talked, you know, at length about the various candidates, you know, based on experience, past, present, future, you know, we all have to do what we think is right in terms of picking who we think is the best candidate, perhaps they have past experience, perhaps they have transferable experience from other occupations that they can bring forward, and then I think, you know, we have to think about customer engagement with, working with various members of the existing board, with town people, with interfacing with the public, and I'm sure all of you have taken that into consideration. To try and help stimulate this activity and move it forward, I'm certainly not going to be shy in offering a motion to appoint Jaclyn Santini to the Board of Appeals. I do think she would be an asset to this board, I think she would step into this role and get up and running in the first, you know, 30, 60, 90 days and beyond. I believe she has a demonstrated track record of being committed to her family, to the town, to her work profession, to volunteering her time, I know that she's spent countless hours doing other things, and I believe she has a strong desire and commitment to government affairs and her community as a whole at the local, state, and federal level, and I think- affairs and her community as a whole at the local, state, and federal level. And I think a lot of that experience would be well-served in town. So, that's why it's with great pleasure that I would offer that motion for her appointment to the Board of Appeals for the remainder of the five-year period through 2021. And I offer that motion if anyone would consider offering a second.
Madam Chair, although I'm very pleased to see that the other two gentlemen's names have been nominated, because they were also front and center on my mind, I will offer a second to your motion.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'll offer just some commentary or observations. Madam Chair, everything you said I agree with. And so, you know, this has been and continues to be a challenging conversation, because by advocating for one, you're ipso facto advocating against others. And I just, I don't want to give that impression. And I know that the other candidates, as intelligent individuals, recognize the situation. But I too have a very high opinion of Mrs. Santini from her presentation this evening, as well as her credentials. You know, I recognize that when we did the roll call, I was the only person to acknowledge, or at least to raise Mr. Oliveri's name. So, I'm now in a situation probably where I'm going to need to evaluate if a vote comes up, whether or not, or how I sort of break the quote-unquote tie. So, I don't know, just thinking out loud. I really know other commentary to that. Thanks just to see how this rolls.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay.
Are you looking for multiple nominations, or are we taking one nomination at a time?
We're taking one motion at a time. So, certainly, anyone would have had the option to offer a motion. I stepped forward to do that. I have a second. So, I'll call for the vote. And if you, just procedurally, if you feel that you want to bring forward another motion after this one, then you may want to work towards not supporting this motion to allow the opportunity for another motion to come forward. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
This is in favor of Mrs. Santini.
Correct.
A vote in favor.
Okay, three, four opposed, two opposed. Motion passes. Okay, Mrs. Santini, congratulations. You have been appointed to the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santini. Mr. Brozo, stay involved. Stay involved.
Okay. Jackie, you receive a letter of appointment from the town clerk shortly. Okay? So, once again, thank you very much to all of the applicants, and we're going to resume the remainder of the meeting. Okay, so moving on to public comments. Yes, if you can please state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Wes Tubert for the road.
Yes.
Basically, what I'd like to see if the board would consider is to offer, well, based on the Board of Appeals vote that you just had, finding that you had eight potential candidates, within the eight, you met a conflict of who did you really want, meaning that you feel that there are several potential candidates for a Board of Appeals position. I would like to call the board to have a discussion at their next meeting in August, to have a special town meeting for the purpose of appointing one or two individuals to the Board of Appeals, to revise in the bylaws to allow one or two members to the Board of Appeals. The reason why I suggest that to this board, and I've suggested it in the past, is one of the questions that you've asked several of the candidates, I'm assuming you've got all of them, is what would you do in the conflict of interest? I'd step aside. Well, if you step aside, now you have a less-than-full board. If you have a situation, and again, I'll bring up the Fourth of July, but I know there's been other cases where members of the Board of Appeals have either had a conflict of interest, or have bad travel arrangements for some reason not to be at a particular meeting or hearing, you'd have somebody that would immediately be able to fill in with that position. So, again, I would respectfully request that the board take that into consideration and have that as an agenda item on your August meeting. Again, to consider having a special town meeting for the purpose of creating, whatever the fashion is, to allow one or two associate members to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you for that comment. I just would want to, not to be taken out of context, but just to seek to understand your rationale, is that, you know, we've had, this has been, we have not had, you know, these type of members for the last however many years. And we've had our annual town meetings, which have a time, a cost, et cetera, associated with it. Can you articulate to myself and to this board why you would feel that it would rise to the level to call a special town meeting, you know, which would bring resources, time, and, you know, there is a cost. I'm not saying, you know, what's, for the best interests of the community should be paramount, and I'm not saying you could put a price on that. But I'd like to hear from you why you feel that it's paramount and urgent that it rises to the level of a special town meeting.
Well, I think one of the reasons is, and again, I'll pick on the Fourth of July. I mean, if you decided to do this as a warrant article on the regular town meeting, my impression is, and again, I'm not trying to tailor this to the Fourth of July, but I think that's one issue that was very passionate to the town. And I think that if you said, well, we'll wait till May, we'll talk about it at the annual town meeting, we'll have the appointment process, say it passes, you've got to let it go, pass Congressional muster through the State House. It couldn't be law until, our bylaw changed until August-ish, and that's, Fourth of July is now passed. And my gut tells me this is that you may have the same issue again. The other thing also, if I may, is that the remaining members of your board, I'm assuming, I don't know all of them, but I know many of them have served for eight, nine, 10 years. Who's to say when these people, like, you know, Charlie Boyle, Mr. Boyle, served for 24 years before he resigned. What's to say that you don't have a person that's been on that board for 10, 15 years choose to resign? It doesn't want to resign without a proper backup, you know, a proper fill. And right now, you've got, admittedly by your board, you've got several candidates that any one of yous would be proud to have supported for that one position.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Did you have any comments, Jeff? It seemed like you may have had a comment.
I would just only note that I think it would be perhaps interesting to find out, and we can certainly do this through the Building Inspector's office, as to how many instances we've had perhaps over the last two or three years where, because of travel plans of a member or some other conflict, there's, that has created a challenge on the board. I think that information would be helpful to know, just to get a sense as to whether this is a systemic problem. The other point I would make is, for a special town meeting, it's roughly $7,000 for the cost associated with the staff, the town clerk has to put out, police, and so on. So, just as a point of information, that is the rough cost for a special town meeting.
Okay.
Just in conclusion, if it doesn't rise to the board's level for a special town meeting, I would certainly want to see that as a warrant article on the annual town meeting at minimum. And I think that this board has seen enough discussion from the town that would warrant that sort of discussion. You've got, you know, like, I know Mr. Shampoo, we had a discussion, you had talked about it several months ago, and said, well, gee, we don't want to be rushed into doing something for the annual town meeting. Here it is June, annual town meeting is in May. You've got nine, 10, 11 months to have some sort of spirited discussion, to see if this board would agree that that's something that we, the taxpayer, the voter, should be allowed to participate or vote on.
So, just for a point of clarity, and I think I know the answer, but just for the benefit of clarity, in case anyone has this question, because I wasn't clear on it, but having what you just said makes me think that you're of the mindset, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is something that you'd like to see this board bring forward as a Board of Selectmen article, and have us essentially have a majority buy into that such that the Board of Selectmen would be bringing this forward. You're not suggesting that you, as a petitioner, would be getting the required signatures and bringing this forward as a petition article. Is that what I'm understanding?
At this time, I'm asking to see what the board's opinion is.
For the board's opinion to bring this up, okay. There is a difference, obviously, as we all know. So, what I can say to you is that we can take that under advisement. We have one meeting in the month of August. I have not had discussions with the manager about what that agenda is going to be set. So, I certainly would take it under advisement to have a full discussion about adding it to an agenda. I don't want to misspeak to you and commit to you that the answer is yes, that it will be in August. But your point in your request has been clearly made, and we certainly will look at that.
And again, Madam Chair, the reason why I bring this forward is, one of the reasons why the board was hesitant to have that discussion was because it was, it would have been kind of a, to lack of a better term, a rush draft. So, now you've got plenty of time, if you wanted to discuss it for an annual. But I think it would be nice, if it couldn't be August, potentially one of the September meetings. But it'd be nice before the holidays to get a clear, you know, a clear voice to hear what you, as a board, have to say about that type of request.
Okay.
And it's something that you have, as a board, at least had the beginnings of a preliminary discussion on.
Understood.
So, I don't think my request is out of line.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Anything? Yes?
Hold on for context. When this was all, when this, when it came to light, or when the question came up as to, you know, we should, we should have alternates, it was in a time of some confusion and stress and a little bit of chaos. And I advocated strongly that we didn't want to act rashly at that time. And I'm glad that we didn't act rashly at that time. Because I've had ample time, I think, to think about the issue, and I've had some conversations with Mr. Hall. And I feel like I've come to the conclusion that it would not be in the best interest of the town to have alternates. We had a three-member board with alternates at one point, and it was determined through experience that the alternate scenario wasn't working to the best advantage of the town. And so, we transitioned to a five-member board with no alternates, which seems to work with some admitted, pointed exceptions. That said, while I kind of already broadcast my knee-jerk sort of gut reaction or gut feeling about the issue, I'm not opposed to having an agenda. I think the conversation can and maybe should be had. And maybe we would come to the conclusion that it's not our, you know, we don't want to push it forward, and so the Board of Selectmen moves away. And then at least a body of citizens can decide if they want to take it up themselves. So, for whatever it's worth, I'm not opposed to it. So, you know, I didn't want to, if you were, Madam Chair, looking to get a sense of the, of your, the other members of the board after this meeting, you know, you'd have to go through Jeff to poll out and determine whether or not there's buy-in for that. This way, I'd say it on the open, and it's one less person you have to poll.
Sure. No, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I absolutely have no issues having that discussion. I think, you know, a resident constituent has brought this forward and is asking us to look at that. I think, you know, we owe that due consideration. I just don't want to prematurely commit to the next agenda. Just, just in fairness to say that we're going to have one meeting in August, and I don't see that we're going to call a second Board of Selectmen meeting. So, depending on, you know, what else the manager has, you know, on the set of calendar dates, it may in fact need to go into the following month.
I defer to you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with you, if you want to entertain something like that. But serving on the board for a few years, obviously, as Mr. Shampoo said, there was three voting members. But you needed a unanimous of three votes. If not, a special permit or a variance would not work. And then the town meeting saw fit to change it to five members. So, all you need is four out of the five. I hear what you're saying about the Fourth of July, but, you know, it is working. And even though I didn't vote for Mrs. Santini, I believe it is going to be working. And if someone decided to resign for any reason, that the board in its wisdom would take another vote, like we just did, and it would work again and again and again, you know. So, I mean, I'm happy with the five members. I don't mind saying that. And, you know, but through you, I think, you know, we could look at it. Not saying we're going to marry to that, but we'll look at it. But it's working. And that's why they jumped to the five. And you, all we need is four out of the five. And you can get a special permit, and one person can vote against it. So, you know, so it is working, and we can look at it. I direct to Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything here?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Selectman Shampoo and Selectman McCoy. The five-member board seems to be working fine. I don't think that one issue should result in changing the whole board. It worked out. It worked well, and I don't see a need to change it at this time.
Yes.
I would just add that any time, in respect to Mr. West, any time a constituent comes to us with a concern, then we should at least take the opportunity to discuss it. So, I'd be happy to second Mr. Shampoo there, and I'd be happy to have a discussion in the future, whatever time you think is appropriate.
Right, so you have it noted, Jeff has it noted here, this is the list of feedback, commentary, anything that needs to be captured for the meeting in addition to what Bev is capturing. So, certainly, you have my commitment that we're taking it under advisement, and we will discuss it.
There's ways maybe to look at what other towns do, I'm not sure.
Sure.
So, but again, I'm just thinking that, you know, it'd be nice that either, I think that there was a call from the town that, you know, possibly a change might be in order. Whether it's working or not, you know, there were town people that they disagree that it's not working. And like I said, is that you've, right away, you've had several candidates that you would consider voting for a full appointment. Whether, whether any of those eight candidates, or seven remaining candidates would consider an alternate appointment, I don't know. But I don't think there's any cost to the town, relatively speaking, in the little training and stuff like that. But, you know, to have another person or two sitting, you know, in wait just in case there's a reason that they need to be called up.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I would just note, and again, it's something that, you know, when this was being discussed earlier in the year, one of the points that was brought to my attention, you know, certainly, these proposals have pros and cons. And I think one of the challenges, as I understand it, that the town ran into when there were alternates, is that you have members who, for the most part, did not have a voting role on many of these decisions unless someone was away or unable to attend. And of course, once a hearing begins on a particular matter, whoever the five members are at the start of that hearing, they have to continue. You can't, if someone, for whatever reason, is not able to make a subsequent hearing, you can't slot in a, an alternate, so to speak. So, it's my understanding that one of the challenges was that members who were associate members, it became difficult to, for them to continue to attend all the meetings when oftentimes they wouldn't really be called upon to cast any votes. So, you're, you're asking individuals to volunteer their time to, in many cases, attend the same meetings that voting members are with little frequency where, for them to be called upon. So, I just, I just point that out to suggest that I believe one of the reasons, aside from the reason that Selectman McCoy brought forward, that that also played into the decision back a number of years ago to make the change. But certainly, it's worth discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, we will take it under advisement. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Moving on to new business and committee reports, and I can start to my left.
I think that's me. So, I took it, I represented us. Last Friday, as most of you know, Sheriff Peter Contusion runs a public safety camp for youngsters in the, in the community, in the communities within the Middlesex District. And they had a little graduation ceremony last Friday up in Chelmsford High School. And I was there with Chief Begonis and Chief McClellan and others from Wilmington Public Safety. So, three, I'm sorry, maybe four teams of Wilmington young men and women graduated. And it was, it was a great day. It's a great event. And any of you that have ever been, you know what it's about. The kids take great pride in themselves. The parents certainly take pride in their children. And Wilmington was very, very well represented by some really wonderful kids. So, it was a good afternoon to spend with those youngsters. Additionally, I just want to let you all know that tomorrow afternoon, I don't know if any of you are planning to join me, but the... if any of you are planning to join me, but the Massachusetts Selectmen Association Regional Meeting is being held in Plymouth. And James Mannen, who is the manager of Massachusetts Emergency Manager, MEMA, Mass. Emergency Management Association, will be the keynote speaker, and it's my intent to go and attend that, and I'll gather any information and certainly bring it back for your digestion, so to speak. So just wanted to bring those two pieces of information to your awareness.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to bring forward the Facilities Master Plan. We all attended that meeting on the 29th, and I think we should consider a discussion on an agenda item.
Okay.
So that we can bring forward our opinions as to what was presented to us. I attended, along with Selectmen Bendel, the school committee's meeting when they presented the master plan, and I went to a facilities plan as well, in addition to all of us going to the, to the meeting on the 29th. And I think we need to have some discussion as to what was presented to us and the direction in which they're, they're taking it. There wasn't a plan there that I saw in my mind that was worthwhile for the town at this point in time. Maybe something will come forward in the future, but I don't see anything at this point in time. So I think we should, you know, put it on an agenda, and let's talk about what they're proposing and ideas. I mean, they're just, they seem to be taking buildings and just moving them around like puzzle pieces and something that we probably all could have done ourselves at this point in time, but...
Thank you for that. Just wanted to interject in, I appreciate you, Selectmen Kyra, bringing those feelings forward. I do want to say that Jeff has been, certainly can speak for himself, but he's been very clear to me that as a result of that meeting and some of the feedback that was received that night and just some general discussions, that he has wanted to take a step back and kind of move the timeline back a little bit and spend more time deliberating with this Board of Selectmen, with the school committee, with the Planning and Conservation Board, other boards and committees, to really look at this and make sure that there's a more unified consensus about the plans and what we all think about the plans, so that is moving with more agreement and buy-in from the various stakeholders on the various boards and committees. Would that be a fair assessment of our conversation that we had most recently?
Yes. The, following the hearing, the public forum on the 29th of June, there were some internal discussions, and the thought is to slow down a bit and have conversations with the representatives from the various affected groups. For example, the Elderly Services Commission, the Library Trustees, the groups that would be impacted by any changes, and explain what it is that's being proposed, get any input from each of these various groups, and then bring that back. And my plan would be to have a, suggest a, an agenda item for a board meeting in September to inform the board of the comments that have come back from these groups. Another group that we would include would be the Recreation Commission. And then, in the meantime, to the extent that individual board members, and I've already begun these discussions, wish to have individual conversations with me about their thoughts on what currently is in existence or offer any comments, those would certainly be entertained, but ultimately to have a, an agenda item in September.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I think that's important, to get all that feedback, but the agenda item for the residents to come in and weigh in as well. Having been on the Yentile Farm Committee, and we took a lot of time and effort to reach out to the residents of Wilmington as to what they wanted at Yentile Farm, so I want this also for them to have a voice in this process.
Okay. I would agree with that.
Madam Chair, I don't think it can be said enough tonight just how impressed I was with all the candidates, so I would, and it was obviously a very difficult decision. I'd like to suggest that we draft a letter of thank you to those who, all who were here tonight and who couldn't be here tonight. I just think that we should embrace those who show the willingness to serve, and I think obviously most of them, all of them do. So I think we should embrace that, and I think I can speak to my colleagues and say we appreciate them wanting to seek this appointment, and I think we should thank them for that. I think perhaps a letter to them would be appropriate.
I would agree with that. Thank you. Anything further? Anything? Yes?
Madam Chair, if I can take a moment. Kevin, I really appreciate you bringing that up because I forgot about the master facility plan. I want to thank the town manager because I did have a vacation planned last week, and believe me, this is most Wilmington sun, it's really not the Bermuda, but it's mostly Wilmington. But anyway, I did sit down with the town manager for a good hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes to talk about the facility plan, and I want to thank the manager. He had a lot of information for me. The assistant town manager was there as well, and we did talk about it. And during the same week, I couldn't take the tour, like you folks, I assume, with the Yentiles Farm. So through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to maybe take an opportunity, work something out with the town manager for me to take a tour. But I want to thank the manager, you know, because I couldn't make this meeting as everyone knew, and it was very informative, so I did express some views to him, and I want to thank him for making the time to do it, so, all right? Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bendel, let me speak.
Sure. So to that end, yes, we did have a site visit for the Yentile Farm. I just wanted to convey that I think it was a very successful tour, we had great attendance. I can't say enough about how well I think the project is going, and that's a credit to the Green Acres Landscape Company that's doing it, as well as Paula Looney, who's taking a real day-to-day approach there, as well as the other town personnel. So to, you know, fast-forward that forward with all of the pleasant comments, we are going to have a Yentile Farm meeting tomorrow night that was scheduled. It's going to take place at 7:00 PM, and that is to offer our committee a chance to debrief, to go over any sort of observations, comments, questions, things of that nature that committee members would have or potentially have as a result of that site visit. But I do think overall, the project is coming along very well. We are, as of, as of that date and as of today, according to the town's records, on schedule, on time, and within our budget. So that's a good, a good thing. So I'd like to offer that, and I don't have anything else other than to agree with the sentiments that were over here thanking the candidates once again. And I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege and just wish my niece, Maddie, a happy 10th birthday. I missed her birthday tonight to be here, this is critically important, but she is in double digits, and she's probably not watching this, but sometimes they do catch it on the replay. So it's, family first is big in my book, so I wanted to give her a shout-out because she loves, loves seeing me on TV. For whatever reason, she's probably the only person on the planet that does, so I'll take that, if I may. So thank you very much, and that's all I have. Anything else? Jeff at all? Okay, so at this point, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Unanimous. Good night.